Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I call to order our public work session. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mr. Battle. Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, excuse me, Madam City Manager. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. The first presenter tonight will be Deputy City Manager Bob Baldwin with the CDBG review. This presentation is to try to address concerns that were raised and to talk about the next steps forward.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of City Council. And as the City Manager stated, the intent with this presentation this evening is to try to follow up on a few of the issues and questions that came up at the last council meeting when we had the more in-depth discussion on the full CDBG and home program budgets. Just quick overview, as you're aware, we're working on the budgets. The annual action plan is part of the city's five-year consolidated plan. That's a plan that we have City Council's adopted and has been reviewed and approved by HUD. Trying to stay on schedule in terms of getting the CDBG and home program funds back to the city's hands to use them. We typically target May the 15th as the date. We like to have the budget submitted to HUD. They have a 45-day review period once we submit the City Council adopted budget to them. And that puts us in line to get the CDBG and home program funds eligible for release to us by July 1st. So we try to get those as close as we can to the beginning of the fiscal year. Just one other thing, and this is, I don't think, an issue. It has not happened before, just as a point of information. Because of the way HUD operates, if you were to, for whatever reason, decide not to approve this budget now, wanted to do some additional work on it, you must have your annual action plan submitted to HUD by August the 16th. After that, they will not accept it and you'll lose out on your funding. So that is what I would call the CDBG home program drop dead dates for submission to HUD, which will be August the 16th. So what I want to cover tonight really is those issues were raised by City Council regarding some of the service providers we use that are located outside of the city's boundaries. And so there's three of those in particular that were raised. So we'll start with the first one, which is the housing crisis hotline, which is provided services provided by four kids. As you can see, that's a $54,167 item in the CDBG budget. And I think there was some confusion as to whether or not we contracted with someone independently outside of the city. And just to make clear, we're part of a regional coalition that actually supports four kids in this effort. There are 13 communities in Hampton Roads that actually have this service provided by four kids. And it's basically like a call center, almost enough staff there to make sure that it's always staffed. So you can see on the slide here the number of localities from Hampton Roads that are also providing support to the four kids that provide this exact same service. As was noted the last time, we've had been funding this program, four kids, for the past three years. And we've had over 6,000 households have received service through four kids for that period of time. And we just note a question regarding whether there should be someone locally to provide the service. There's no one locally that could, in a short period of time, be able to take on this kind of a service. So if the City Council was interested in trying to take this on unilaterally instead of participating as part of this larger group, it would take some time to determine how to actually perform that function and staff it and come up with a budget for operating it. In this case, obviously, we're one of 13 localities providing funding for the overall budget of the operation. So that's that four kids piece. The second one was the Independence Center. It's our independent living services for providing services for the disabled. It's a $44,000 item. Once again, we're part of the larger group of Hampton Roads localities that supports the Independence Center for this. There are seven communities. Again, the ones that support them are listed up there. Over the last five years, we've had 383 citizens that have provided services through the Independence Center, this program. And once again, there's no independent organization operating within the city that provides the same level and type of service at the present time. So again, if the desire was to try to provide this totally operated locally with a local provider, that would have to be something you'd have to explore, whether or not you could actually develop an organization to carry out that service. As it is, these seven communities are all going in together to support this nonprofit. The third one was not in the CDBG program, it was actually the home program. There was a question about the down payment closing cost services. It's a $200,000 budget item out of the home program budget. Just point out, this service is provided through the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. And once again, we're not the sole participant in that program with HRPDC. Again, you have a number of Hampton Roads localities that use the HRPDC to provide this service. We have regular contact with the HRPDC over this. And I think one they just point out, they don't do, and they have not done, meetings in their office with clients. Just like almost all real estate transactions today, their services are provided over the phone, online, through other means. They don't do in-office meetings to provide this service. As we noted before, they provide down payment closing cost assistance up to $20,000. Since 2016, since we've been funding HRPDC for this service, 73 households have participated in the program. There are currently a number of households working through the program at the present time. And again, if the City Council wanted to take this on as a local program, this is one that has probably more potential for being done locally. But we don't have anyone on staff ready to sort of pick it up and just roll with it immediately. So if that was an interest in moving away from the HRPDC, having the city staff take over the program or have some other provider other than HRPDC do it, that would just take some time to kind of figure out how to do that and what that ultimate cost would be for that service. So last couple of items I wanted to get to during the last council meeting, some question about how people were made aware of potential for participating in the CDBG program, other nonprofits, other qualifying entities that might want to participate. What we're proposing, moving forward into next year's budget, obviously, as I indicated on that first slide, with our schedule is pretty tight on us right now. But moving forward, we can certainly move to much more broad program and trying to make more users, more nonprofit groups and other potentially eligible people aware of the opportunity to participate in the program so we could, you know, have a few more qualifying, qualified nonprofits to participate in the program, at least submit applications for consideration in the process. And we do propose to come back to the City Council in January, and something we haven't been doing in the past, to come back and give you sort of program updates, how the CDBG and home programs are doing, and come back on looking at these three items I just presented tonight and give you an update on what we've discovered as far as taking over the services locally or not. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have regarding those items.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Baldwin, for the presentation. One of the things that seemed to be in common is these other localities that are receiving part of the proposed budget for CDBG, the home service, and also the CDBG service, Picosa and Alawite. So we get the funding and they help contribute to the funding, but some of the service goes to those communities?
Well, what happens, all those communities actually fund the program through the provider. So each locality has an agreement with the provider and provides their level of funding so that the provider has a larger pool of funds to work from.
Okay. And Portsmouth gets a piece of that same funding.
That's correct.
Is it equitable or is it just?
Yes. And so, yeah, so everybody's sort of putting in their piece. What's good about that, obviously, is that we try to make sure, because they have more staff, since you have more localities participating, you have much less of an opportunity for someone to, if you had a one-person or two-person operation, someone to call in sick or be on vacation, to lose your ability to provide service if you're small staff. When they operate these with a larger group, then the goal is to try to make sure the help is available for whoever calls over there at all times, that they're in office hours for that.
Okay.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor, and then Dr. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your presentation, Mr. Baldwin. Yeah, my question is pertaining to the home services again. You know, I appreciate your transparency. Like you said, it is something that you think that we could take on. What department would actually be taking on this home services and probably help us move this $200,000, I guess, back in home?
Right. And that'd be part of that assessment we'd be doing, because you have a couple of different options. Number one, the city could take it on itself. We'd have to look, the City Manager, obviously, staffed, and we're not staffed to take on that full-time role. It might have potential for using the PRHA, might be another agency. We have not discussed them taking the program over. They might be another option that we know right off the top of our head might be potential providers of the same type of service.
And how long we been funding this particular service?
I think that was, when going to PRHA, I think I said that was maybe five or six years, I believe.
And this is nothing, no one else, other councils have looked into?
Since 2016.
2016. No other councils, no one?
In fact, if you're back when you went to 2016, there was an understanding that was a good way that the service provided. May not recall, there were a number more services that, when we had larger CDBG funds and home funds, PRHA used to provide a lot more services. And when, as PRHA started watching their costs and reducing the programs that they were providing, we had to look for alternative service providers.
Right. So is this something that?
That's not been six years ago, so it's worth going back and taking a fresh look at.
So is this something that we are going to start exploring, trying to figure out how to do this service?
Yes, that's what we were proposing, that we would come back to City Council in January and let you know what we had found out, as far as that goes.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Mr. Baldwin, to make sure I'm clear, so are you saying that this, on the home service, the down payment closing cost assistance has only been around since the fall of 2016?
That's how long HRPDC has been providing the service.
So when you say that's how long HRPDC has been providing the service, how long has Portsmouth been involved through the home services in providing this closing?
If Jeff Cromer may know how long we've been doing that.
Good evening. So PRHA provided the service for, I think, in the range of like five years or so. Largely, when they were developing Westbury and selling units out there, they did it. And so I think it started around '04, and then they discontinued doing it just a few years before we started working with PDC.
So prior to even that Westbury project, the city of Portsmouth was not involved in providing housing and closing assistance to low-income persons?
So I wasn't here at that point, but the best that I can tell from the records, they did not start offering it when the, so the home program started in the early 90s. And it doesn't look like the city started doing down and closing until sometime in the 2000s. As I said, right around when PRHA was developing the for-sale units in Westbury.
Right. So when PRHA discontinued it, that assistance was being provided in Portsmouth?
There were a few years where we were not doing down and closing.
So when PRHA was, you were saying this program was originally under PRHA? That was a down payment and closing assistance program?
Correct.
So that was located here in Portsmouth?
Yes. They used, they had some staff that did it out of their office.
Okay. And that was part of the city or PRHA?
We put them under agreement, the same way we do with the PDC. We use them as a sub-recipient, put them under agreement, and they provide the service.
Where was that housed?
At their office. So when they were over here, and then when they moved over to South Street, they moved it with them.
Okay. And so now, so we have had the service in the city?
Correct.
And we have had the skill and resources to provide it in the city. And so when it shifted over to HRPDC, who were we paying rent to at that time? Or are paying rent to now?
We don't pay rent. We, you know, we, so the PDC, again, we have them under agreement. And we pay them a fee, the same way we paid PRHA a fee. We pay the PDC a fee to deliver the service, to cover their overhead, the same way that we, that PRHA did.
Right. And how much, about how much is that overhead?
It's around $4,000 to $5,000 per unit. We have a fee scheduled with them, and it's based upon them actually closing, you know, a sale. And so it's in that range of 4,000 to 5,000.
4,500 per unit?
Depending on their actual costs.
You mean per house that is closed on?
Correct.
And so in this process, what is the amount that people can get up to for closing and down payment assistance?
They can get up to 20, most of them are getting up to 14, 5. They can get up to 20 under some very certain, specific conditions.
Okay. And these persons may not necessarily be Portsmouth residents, it's just that they're buying a house in Portsmouth?
Correct.
Okay. And so you think it would be beneficial for Portsmouth people to know that the service exists and they can go to an office in Portsmouth and get it?
I don't think it's been a detriment.
You said, you said what?
I don't think it's been a detriment to the program that it's not here.
Right. So how many of these new home buyers were actually Portsmouth people?
I couldn't tell you, but I'm almost certain 90% or more, probably 95%. Very few are people outside of Portsmouth. It's usually, you know, the PDC is working in these other communities. And sometimes they'll have a buyer in another, who's looking in another community and cannot afford that community. And the PDC will say, oh, we also have this program in Portsmouth. You may want to look there.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, like I said last time, my concern is still that we're over in Chesapeake servicing Portsmouth people. And since the program was in Portsmouth, I know one of the justifications has been about finding people who are, have the skills to do it. Evidently, the skills were here before, and so I don't see how they disappear somehow. The next issue is on the follow-up, page six. And Mr. Baldwin, you were saying that, you're talking about the next fiscal year. You're talking about this budget season, is Gary coming in or the budget, two years from now?
Right, what I was, no, I was talking about the one we'd be doing for next year's budget.
Okay.
For next year's budget. So we would start that this fall.
Yeah.
Would actually start the outreach in the fall. The way that process works, we start, you know, working on the next budget as soon as we get into the fall season so that as the City Manager and the budget team starts putting the regular city budget together, this can line up.
Right. That's, that's.
Start that program in the fall.
That's what I mean. So you're saying that you all will start putting in place things in the next budget?
What we're suggesting for that provision to start soliciting or making, you know, broader advertisement of potential for participation, that'd be for the next cycle.
Right. So we're talking two years. You're talking, you would be putting it in place for not this year's budget, but for the following budget?
Probably for July of '23.
Right. Right. So I don't see how it becomes a big budget issue as far as rearranging and adjusting how we're marketing and reaching out. Why does it take two years to?
Well, it doesn't take two years. Well, they have, we have a process to go through for applicants to get into the process. They have to qualify, you know, we have, you know, those are qualifying nonprofits primarily that are, become recipients of these funds.
Well, speaking to the marketing of it, how people even know about?
Oh, right.
That this is available. That shouldn't take two years to?
No, we would start, that's what I was saying. We would start doing that in the fall, for the next budget cycle, which you would be looking at, you know, in the, right out, you know, January, February. We would have started reaching out earlier than that. So we would be putting that program together now. So, you know, your budget this year would go into effect in July. We'd be talking about, once we get into, you know, September, October timeframe, we'd be reaching out for the next budget cycle.
And so you haven't come up, like, with a plan yet exactly how you're going to change that from what you're doing now?
No. No. But I don't think that'd be that difficult for us to put together a program for doing more outreach.
Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
I guess, just kind of rearranging the question that I asked before. So the proposed budget of the $200,000, is that split across the localities that are listed here? Or does everybody get $200,000?
Well, the $200,000, you're running the home program?
Yes.
That's our $200,000 that's used for providing housing in Portsmouth.
Okay. So is it expended, we finding that we're doing 20 homes a year?
They've pretty much been doing, exactly. That's pretty much been their volume they've been able to get people through. It's been a very challenging housing market, as you can imagine. One of the things that's been happening, these programs have requirements, for example, people getting home inspections done. But in the last year, a lot of sellers have been getting buyers who will skip the home inspection process. And so one of the problems we've been having, and that has nothing to do with who's providing the services, just the way the market has been. Now, if the interest rate's going up, that's likely to change. But it's been so competitive out there that people are trying to go through the regular process of qualifying for down payment closing cost assistance, being outrun by people who have cash. If that makes sense.
Yes. And the $4,000 fee that's given back to HRPDC that comes out of it, too?
That comes out of that $200,000.
Okay.
Exactly. That's our total contribution to HRPDC is the $200,000.
And Mr. Baldwin, I have a question. The 1.5, I think it was discussed, that our allocation this year would be about 1.5 million from HUD?
Yes.
Is that total 1.5 million, whether it's allocated as a collaboration through other organizations in which we use their services to provide the programs that you just spoke about, is that, is that 1.5 allocated and used for our folks in the city of Portsmouth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Just follow up. When you said a service provided by online and by phone, has that always been how that has been handled?
Yes.
So when?
I can't go back, again, we go back to when HRPDC was doing it, a lot of real estate sales. That's been, you know, eight or nine years ago, so probably not as much being done the way home sales are being done today.
So?
But since HRPDC has been doing the program, they've been doing it as a online, on-phone type of a service without having, you know, meetings in their office space.
So when PRHA was doing it, it was online and by phone?
I couldn't, I could not tell exactly how PRHA operated back then. I'm guessing in those days, again, I'm going back 10 years ago, real estate market did more in-person than they do today.
Does Mr. Kramer know if it was done in-person or online back when PRHA was doing it?
So my belief, you know, I knew, they worked with a Realtor largely who was handling the Westbury sales. A lot of it was people, he had an office at Westbury, people were going there, but a lot of it was handled over the phone. The lenders, the Realtors that people are working with, if there's problems with getting information, those lenders and those Realtors who are counting on being paid out of this, out of their commissions, are willing to do whatever it takes. And so there's really no need, there has not been any need. And I think PRHA was largely running it that way, too. There were not people coming into PRHA's office to work with them on the down and close.
So the Realtors, the Realtors were the ones initiating this use of this service or having information of it?
The way the service works, you have to be pre-qualified through a lender, through an approved lender. And then you go in and you apply for the program and show your pre-qualifications. And then the people go out and choose a Realtor to work with. And so they are largely, that Realtor, a lot of the time, is handling a lot of that paperwork.
So that whoever the lender is, is the one that's really initiating this process?
Well, the home buyer is. I mean, the home buyer has to apply to the PDC. They have to show that they're pre-qualified and what their amount of pre-qualification is.
Who's the PDC?
The Hampton Roads.
Oh, HRPD, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So they, you know, the home buyer's applying for the program, but they need to be pre-qualified through a lender.
Right.
And so once they are done with that, they work with the Realtor and they work with their lender. And a lot of that communication and paperwork, once they get into the buying of the house, is handled between the PDC and the Realtor and the lender.
Okay. So once again, that home buyer would have to have knowledge of this HRPDC program?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Madam City Manager?
The next presentation will be Budget Officer Trey Burke, and he will discuss the revised CIP based on the changes made at the last meeting.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, and members of City Council. Tonight, I will briefly review the fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital program and any particular changes made to the program after discussions on April 26, both on an overall basis and by category. The Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP, is a five-year plan that addresses the procurement and construction of capital assets as well as ongoing maintenance of city infrastructure through replenishment and replacement projects. The CIP's first year is the only appropriated year. Subsequent years provide a plan for addressing future infrastructure needs with projected expenditures and resources. Capital projects may take more than one fiscal year, and as such, the funding is authorized by a project and the project is closed on completion. Governments utilize capital improvement plans to identify present and future needs requiring capital infrastructure. This chart reflects the reallocation and increase of the overall capital program. The education category was increased by $7.2 million. The community and economic development category was decreased by $516,000. And overall, the capital program was increased by $6.7 million. The various school improvements project includes a Churchland Academy roof replacement and a Craddock Elementary School roof replacement. Both those projects totaled $2.6 million. After adding the IC Norcom field improvements, the Manor High School field improvements, and the Churchland High Fieldhouse and lighting projects, the total for education projects is $9.8 million. After removing the Crawford Street Roundabout, the Community and Economic Development CIP totals $250,000. This includes the city gateways, demolition, and resiliency planning projects. This presentation discussed the capital program and changes made after direction from council. I would be glad to answer any questions or report back if you may have.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Burke. At our last meeting, you have under the proposed budget adjustments on page three. I just want to make sure. I know we did the Crawford Street Roundabout.
Yes, sir.
What about the $1 million that we talked about with the evaluation for vehicle services? Was that part of the CIP?
That was the placeholder.
Right.
And that was kind of originally put in that 2.6, which was 3.6. So it just kind of increased it by that amount. So the $1 million is kind of already in that $7.2 million.
The, you're talking, which, where are you, which line are you speaking, Bob?
The education line. We talked about it being kind of a placeholder.
Right.
And that money was in the education CIP whenever the budget was originally proposed. And then it was moved down at the manager and the engineering's discussion. And it was then decided at the last meeting to reallocate that $1 million. So it ends up kind of netting out.
I'm not, I'm not following you on this here. The 7, the 7.2 million adjustment, you're saying that that includes the million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also, also these can be adjusted based on the outcome of the infrastructure deal as far as any monies that may be coming from that, that it could change these figures?
We would need to come back to council, I guess, sir.
Right. And the other, on page four, on the education, you have, you have the Churchland High School. you have the Churchland High School Field House and Lighting. And at the last meeting, I, I requested that we move the Churchland High School Field Improvements, IC Norcom Field Improvements and Manor High School Field Improvements. And then the city manager added in the Churchland Soccer Field Lighting?
Yes.
Is, so is that up here?
That's it.
That's, it's one project. We, we made it the Field House and the Lighting one project because it's, it's spatially encapsulated.
Well, well, on the handout that you gave us, the Churchland High School Field Improvement was separate. And then the city manager added in the Churchland Soccer Field Lighting.
Yes, sir.
So there, there are two separate projects.
Correct.
Because they're not even on the same property.
Okay, it was by understanding that they are.
Let me, unless I'm looking at the, not the soccer field, not the middle school.
Right.
That's different.
It's the lighting. And we, it's two separate projects, but we combined them because it's still Churchland in that area. But they're the two separate projects.
Okay. And so when, when you added on the Churchland Soccer Field Lighting, there was some idea of where those funds would possibly come from?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Because, because I'm glad to hear that because it was added on with the field improvements and questions have come up about where the funds would come from, so.
And that's the next phase is to come back and talk about proposed.
Right, right. So when, but when you tacked it on to the high school, I'm quite sure you did that within mind knowing that there are some sources of funding.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And so these are both of those projects?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And, and also keep in mind that these projects are still on the list for consideration for ARPA funds as well.
Okay, okay.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
I have two questions. So where does the, the Charles Pete project, where is that at? Is that in the ARPA funds?
Correct. That's on the list for consideration for ARPA funds.
Okay. And what does the, for the, the IC Norcom Field Improvements, what does that include? And also for Manor and Churchland, is that, that's just for a Field House?
Correct. And I think, uh, City.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. To answer your question, Vice Mayor, the IC Norcom is the, the complete complex. And based on the presentation tonight, it's the Field Houses at the other two high schools.
Say it, say it again, Mr. Wright. Can you say that again?
Yeah, Nor, IC Norcom is the entire complex, and for the other two high schools, it's just the Field Houses. The lighting is not at the high schools, for the soccer complex, it's, it's in Churchland but not at high school.
Right, right. So that, that high school, the, the lighting for the soccer field, that's not associated with the high school?
Correct. And, uh, sorry.
No, go right on.
No, in the overall plans that you saw for the entire suite of improvements for all the fields, they do, each one of them does have a number of upgrades. At Churchland, there are lighting, turf field, Field House and some other amenities. Manor, Field House, some road improvements, access road, the lights were, were already done out there, turf field. For IC Norcom, it's the entire complex because that's one where you can't actually do a, a piece without impacting all the other pieces that needs to be done in its entirety.
So, so the, the upgrades that are in this CIP for the high school improvement, you're saying that's only at the, at the schools other than Norcom, it's only the Field House?
At the, at the cost that was shown, that is only the Field Houses.
So, so where is the turf, for example, for turf, where's the turf field figure for that?
So the, the overall figures that were presented, so the, the entire upgrades for each one of the complexes here, each one is upwards of $5 million.
Okay, okay. So the 819 for Churchland, 819,000 for Churchland and 837 for Manor, that's on, those are only Field Houses?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Madam City Manager, you have the floor?
I just wanted to add on a little bit of that. First, in hearing that, we will definitely separate the two projects because that was my mistake. I don't, I didn't, Churchland, I hear Churchland, I think it's all the same. So the Churchland Lights is for the soccer field, not the school. And so those will be two separate projects. The other piece of that is when we initially started this conversation, it was about the turf field at IC Norcom plus the three Field Houses. In order to move forward, we had to get a complete understanding of what was on site so that if we went in to do any construction, we wanted to make sure that we didn't interrupt something else. And so with IC Norcom, that's what you were seeing. It was, and we thought that it would be a phased approach. Once IC Norcom was done, then we would look to the others to see if that's something that we wanted to move forward with. But initially, it was just about a turf field at IC Norcom and three Field Houses.
So when we, when we talk about the ARPA funds being used, so where would the ARPA funds be allocated according to these projects?
The same. It would be for the IC Norcom project as well as the Field Houses for both the other high schools.
So are we looking, so for this 9.7 million, we're looking to use ARPA funds to cover all of these costs?
It wouldn't be the 9.7 because 2.6 of that is roofing, and that would not be a, a part of that.
Okay.
So we would only be looking at the field improvements. And the reason why we were looking at ARPA funds is because of the funds that the schools received as a part of their ARPA funds did not cover the recreation facilities. So we were hoping that we could leverage the funds that they were getting for those maintenance HVAC related things to use that to offset with the ARPA funds that we use for the recreation facilities.
Okay. So when will we have a handle on whether we're using ARPA funds or going out for bonds? When, when will we have that information?
That's a good question, and it's a moving target unfortunately because we've submitted almost $200 million worth of grant requests for different projects. And until we get some indication, and we do not know how long that process of review is going to take, in addition to preparing those $200 million worth of requests, we put it through to our legislators, and we've gotten letters of support from some of our partners to try to enhance our ability to get those funds. But right now, that timetable is unknown because we don't know when that's going to conclude.
Now, the 200 million you're talking about, are you talking ARPA or infrastructure?
Infrastructure.
Okay, yeah. Was, I was asking about ARPA.
Oh, ARPA, we get, we get the next allotment in July.
Right.
And so we would start having conversations probably early June to talk about where the council wants to go with those funds. So we will have a clear understanding of where we're going with those ARPA funds.
So the ARPA funds could potentially apply to these projects?
Correct.
As well as possible infrastructure money?
Correct.
Right.
Although we haven't really seen anything from the infrastructure that relates to recreational facilities. But that doesn't preclude us from putting it out there because we were directed by our legislators to put every request out there as long as we justified it. And, and I think we've done a really good job of trying to do that.
So when will we have, again, the definite figures of how much will be, of ARPA will we be using for these projects?
We will have a definite figure of how much we're using for these projects once council, we, once we have the discussion with council and get policy direction on how you want to use those funds. And that will be in June.
Well, that's sort of, that's sort of circular because if, if you already have in mind the ARPA funds that are available to use for these projects, then I thought that there would be some presentation to council, here are the ARPA funds, here's what we can apply to these projects, and then here's what we may have to go out to bond and finance.
And, but again, keep in mind that the ARPA funds are not just for projects. You could determine that you want to do more direct pays, you may determine that you want to do other things. So keep in mind, this is just authorization. This is not the funding piece. So when we have the funding discussion, that's when that will come into play. We will present options for how to move forward with these projects. One being ARPA is a potential funding source, another, I mean, there are other things also on the ARPA list that are not reflected here as well. And so that will be the discussion that we have next.
Okay. Well then, well then, if it's, if it's that open, then why aren't we including the high schools, the, the fields at the other high schools as far as the possible projects that we could be doing? If, if you're looking at these different sources of funding that we know the ARPA is coming and possible infrastructure, and we know we have funds available through going out for the possible bonds?
Yes. In all the discussions we've had, we've presented the total picture in terms of what the expected costs were in all the fields. But the priorities that we've received have been IC Norcom and the Field Houses. And now keep in mind also, part of that is because we talk about Charles Peak. We have a number, we have, I want to say $10 million of recreation facility projects that we have programmed currently for ARPA funds.
Yeah. I, I may have missed it, but I don't, I don't remember prioritizing it in that way that this Norcom's Field House and Turf Field and Churchland, just the lights. I, I don't, unless I missed, I don't remember council prioritizing.
Yeah, that, that was actually the discussion, that was part of the, one of the earlier discussions that came about, do, not this budget, but the budget prior, where we set an expectation that we wanted to move forward with the IC Norcom, and it was the IC Norcom turf field and Field House plus the other two Field Houses. It was never the entire complex. The way that the entire complex came into play was before we went to do construction on the turf field, we had to have an understanding of the impact that it was going to have on the other facilities there. And in doing that, that's how we determined that we couldn't do just the field because it was going to impact all those other areas. And so in order to be able to do the field, you had to budget for the entire complex. That's the only reason why that became a priority because the priority was driven from the turf field.
Right. I, I remember the turf field and the Field House. I just, like I said, I don't remember that excluding Churchland and Manor fields and that just pertaining to the lights. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right. Yeah, that was, yeah. And I understand that, and, but that was a carryover conversation and it was never, there was never a mention about the other fields. It was only the Field Houses.
Right.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. The turf fields, that was projected to be what, 6.8 million?
Uh, for Norcom. For Norcom, the entire, the entire, the complex, I think, was, so, got down 6.7 for Norcom. Churchland was 4.8 and Manor was 4.6 to the entirety of all three complexes.
So that, that did not, the soccer field lights in Churchland?
It was totally separate from the high school fields because it's not part of the high school.
That was?
Approximately $350,000.
350,000. Okay. So a, as we said here, we're, we're not certain that what we're looking at here on the CIP presentation, that those projects are going to be paid for by ARPA. Is that, is that correct?
I, I would say that's, decision is to be determined because that's going to be up to council to determine how you want to allocate those remaining funds that we're going to get in July.
Okay, well, if it's not ARPA, then what?
It, then it would be bonds.
And the amount of the, of how much?
The bonds.
9.7?
Potentially. If they're, if they're not funded through another source, then they would be bonds for the 9.7 or 9.8.
Okay.
It could be a combination. It could be a combination of ARPA funds or bond funds.
So, so when, when's the deadline for council deciding?
It depends on how fast you want the projects to move forward. Because right now, what you're doing is authorizing the funds to be spent. The next phase would be to determine what the funds are and when they're available. Because let's say we're talking about bond funds, we're having a, a conversation with our financial advisors in June. And they're going to present to us when we, at the earliest, we can look for doing a bond. And so we won't know that information until they present that to us.
And with ARPA funding, that can, that can go pretty darn quick?
That can go pretty quick. Because we get that in July, you make a decision that you want to use ARPA funds for these projects, then we can start working with the schools to start construction and create a schedule and all that.
What's the, what's the downside on bond funding this?
I don't, if this is a priority, I don't know that there is a downside.
I'm not talking about priority. I'm talking about from a financial perspective. Is there any downside side in going to the bond market?
Well, I always, anytime we go to the bond market, you know, we, we have a pretty high debt as it is now. And so to the extent that we can reduce that or use something other than bonds, that, that will help our credit rating, which will in turn help the interest rate that we get, which will in turn mean a lower debt payment.
Right. So going to the bond market, that does not the best of options?
It's one option. It's not the, it's not the only option that we have at the moment because we do have funds that we will receive that could use, that we could use for this.
Come July.
Come July.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Right. So actually, what we authorized tonight can be adjusted.
Correct.
So we can add on and take off, which probably is going to happen once we see what ARPA infrastructure will fund.
Correct.
Well, well more the infrastructure because the infrastructure will not be used for any of these projects, but it could potentially take from another project to put towards these.
Correct.
Okay, so, all right.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
So for, for the IC Norcom Field Improvement, the, the whole complex, does that include the, the softball field as well?
Yes, sir. It's the, the turf field, Field House, expansion of the track, baseball, softball fields, fencing, tennis courts, and the, the interior sports, like the Olympic style sports.
Because right now, Nor, IC Norcom softball team doesn't have a fence around their, their field that they play at. So when the ball is hit, it just goes out into, into the field with, with no gate. So they're, they're literally playing on a softball field with no gate in the outfield. What is the, the status on the, the Kavla Manor project and the sports place?
When you say status?
I, I remember, I can't, I, I was looking in my notes for the PowerPoint, but on the.
The renderings?
On the PowerPoint, it was saying, um, I forget the term that she was, but basically, we were, we were saying that it wasn't, it was something that we, we needed, I guess, to authorize or something.
Right.
And I can't remember the exact PowerPoint.
Yeah, what you're referring to, we were tasked as staff to look at the possibilities for all of our facilities to see how we could enhance them to potentially attract. all of our facilities, to see how we could enhance them to potentially attract more opportunities to, to have events at those facilities. So, what we did was did a rendering of both Cavalier Manor and the Sportsplex to demonstrate the what-if and that we, we have the potential, we own the property, and we can build it out to enhance those amenities. And we gave price tags on that build-out potentially based on the things that we listed in the PowerPoint. And, but that's all contingent on taking it out, getting community involvement if you want to go forward with that. But that's, I, I can't remember the, the prices, but it was, one was like 60 million and another was 20-some million for Cavalier Manor, I believe.
Cavalier Manor was between 20 and 28 million.
Okay.
Sportsplex, depending on which option or what additional amenities you wanted to include, was between 40 and 80 million.
And regarding the, the Sportsplex option, I know we also received some information regarding how Virginia Beach, how they're doing financially. Could we, could we, could somebody speak to that? In brief?
Yes, we could speak to that. Good evening, council. I don't have my notes in front of me, but just going off of what we pulled together, Virginia Beach, they used different sources to actually build those facilities. I think the one in Sportsplex was 68 million, the other one was in the range of 20, 10 to 20 million. That was back probably in 1999. But they used different resources. The community actually paid for some of that. It didn't all come from, they bond-funded some, but they did different, they, they did different things to pull in the resources to build that facility.
Yeah, as far as revenue and how it benefited the city, I know we, because I remember something that, that was presented to say that they were using the revenue to pay back some of the bonds and things of that nature.
Well, their revenue comes from different sources, but there is not, it's not holistically paying off all of the debt that they incurred for that facility. Because you're talking about some ticket sales that they may have done, and it's just the extension of the actual down, what is it, downtown waterfront, waterfront. Because they had the oceanfront, then they extended it to that Sportsplex because they were having different events there. So, all of the dollars that they make, it's not all to pay off debt because they don't, it doesn't make enough for that.
Right, I know that. So, I'm saying, what I'm saying is that, one, the original question of why, as for the, the report in the first place, is, has it been a benefit for them financially in the city?
I can't say it has because I, I don't know. I don't work for Virginia Beach, but what I could, whatever was in the notes, again, I don't have those in front of me. We did provide all of that information with the income that they actually, the revenue that they incur. They talked about the debt, they talked about how long it did, how long it took to build the facility, what it was an extension of, how much it costs, and all of the resources. And it came, I remember, it came a lot from the hotel tax. Remember, Virginia Beach is a tourism destination spot. Portsmouth is not so much that. So, they were able to work with the hotels and the businesses to incorporate different plans for resources to build and assist in building that facility. So, Virginia Beach is a hard comparison because they are a different, they're different in locality as far as a tourism destination. We are not that.
Do we look at Harrisonburg as a, as something that could, could be a comparison? Because I know they have, what, about 40,000 less people than we do.
Can you, can you guys?
But they're a college. You're hard to hear, but...
Yeah, it's not coming through.
But there's, there's a college, that is a college destination. They have the students there.
But as it pertains to a Sportsplex, that actually has really nothing much to do with being a college town. I say that because as somebody who actually runs an AAU program and actually travels around, we don't, we don't particularly look at, oh, is it a college city or is it a tourist city? We actually look at the event that's going to be there, who's, who's, who's having it. So, so in saying that, when it comes to, I talked to the person who actually, his name's Chuck, he actually runs the, a few facilities around the country. And when it comes to those type of facilities, they were saying that there's more events than there is facilities.
That may be so, but, so that, and I'm not here to get in a debate about that information, but I do know you have to have a resource to be able to pull those dollars in. So, if you're talking about a facility that is where, just like if I can say, ODU had a facility, they wanted the Ted Constance Center at that time, ODU would provide dollars and donations and whatever to build that facility. When you're looking at a college campus, they charge fees. Students pay for that. State may provide some additional resources, but that's how they are able to get their facilities. You got donations, you got state, because of the facility they, they run, they have basketball, which we know ODU is a big basketball team oriented sports facility for them. They also have football, but those dollars are generated through the college in order to be able to build facilities of that magnitude.
I think, I think in general, we might be talking about two different things because I think I'm talking more so about the billion-dollar business of youth sports itself and just having something like that of attraction. And I think you're talking more so about other things being the attract, yeah, funding and, and other things being an attraction.
So, if, if I may, and we can definitely look at this Harrisonburg, I think the, the thing to remember here is that there are policy decisions that need to be made. A number of jurisdictions have facilities of these sorts, not just because of revenue potential, if you will, but it, it is the attraction, is people, and you, you have to weigh that against the cost-benefit. If, if the intent is to have people generate activity that bring people into the community to change perceptions, to, to fill up restaurants, what have you, then that needs to be a plan to do that. If it's to generate revenue, then we would need to really look at how we're going to, to get the facility constructed. And that could be a public-private partnership to do that. That doesn't necessarily have to be the city doing that. Because when you think about revenue, you have to think about the sources of revenue that you're going to get from those events. You have to think about hotel tax, which we have a few, our hotel tax revenues is about a million bucks versus Virginia Beach, which is 43 million. Our hotel tax rate is 8%. Both are the same. Our restaurant meal tax revenues is $10 million versus 89 million. So, there's opportunity, but you can't look at it from the perspective of you build this facility and then you generate the revenue because the revenues are going to come in, in those categories that we have. And it's restaurants, it's hotels, and it's fees. Or it's, yeah, it's fees. And so, when you look at that, you have to ask yourself, okay, is this going to be sufficient to attract people to come to that facility? Is it something new? Is it not? You take the Bo Williams facility in Hampton. It started out as a private venture. It continued to be a private venture till it wasn't profitable for the private owner anymore. So, the city felt that with the expansion of hotels and the fact that hotels were willing to help supplement that by paying additional fees because it generated activities at the hotels, then the city took it over. And it's not a revenue producer, but it fills other needs of the city. So, it's a, it's a matter of setting those priorities and policy in terms of what you want to see out of these facilities, what can we afford to do, or who can we partner with to get it done? And there is a whole range of possibilities.
Councilman Woodard and then Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to piggyback off that as well. I, I think when we say things like this isn't a tourist destination, it's a lot of history here in Portsmouth, and we are trying to make sure that we build upon that each and every day to, to showcase what Portsmouth is all about and to really bring people here. We, we, we can't be one-dimensional. It may not be about sports, but once again, it's a lot of history here, and, and that's a, a marquee for what people come to Portsmouth for. But I do want to expound about what the city manager said, public, I mean, private-public partnerships. That's something that I discussed with her in private a lot. And, and I think that could be something that we must continue to explore so we can get some of these projects, you know, off our list, when we can get some of these facilities in our communities. And it can help bring some of these families together, bring families to Portsmouth. So, I just want to know what's the process or what's the steps that we're taking so we can't keep saying, this is not a destination, our people do not come here, or we don't have certain facilities. What we have to do so we can go ahead and, and, and make those private-public partnerships going forward?
Basically, look for potential private partners who would have an interest in partnering with the city to develop some of these properties.
So, is that something you guys are doing? I, I mean, one thing about myself, you know, like I said, I worked in the constructing industry for a long time. So, you know, and, and I, I worked in the, the entertainment field for a long time. So, you know, it's a lot of people that are interested in, in different business ventures. Now, once again, we want to make sure they go through the proper procedures, go through the proper policies, whatnot. So, is that something that council members do or is that something that they should be coming to you guys about? Because once again, like I say, we have the ideas of the things that we want in the city. But I'm trying to say is it something that you guys should be marketing and getting those people to come here? Because I, I mean, we, we can't stay stagnant and, and not get these things going, you know? I, I mean, if, if we're not, if we're not working towards this being a tourist destination, if we're not working towards this being a place where people want to come and spend dollars and not make this a weekend stop, okay, then, then pretty much, we're not doing our jobs. So, you know, what we need to do collectively as a council, as a municipal government, what do we need to do to make sure that, hey, we're letting people know that we're open for business and, and we want to get these facilities, these projects done in our city?
Well, I think it's a collective effort. If you know people that are interested in a public-private partnership, then bring them to the table and we will have conversations. I mean, it's no different than someone initiated conversation with Mr. Dorian Finney-Smith about a public-private partnership on the basketball courts. It starts just like that, that someone has an idea, someone wants to give back to the city, someone has an interest in putting something in a location, and once you find out that there's an interest, then you start the negotiation and figure out how can you get to win-win.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, mine is dealing against specifically with the capital improvement projects that were listed as unauthorized. I would like, if there's no objection from council, since, since this is adjustable and we're going to be revisiting it, if we would add the Churchland High School field improvements in their totality, the Manor High School field improvements in their totality to the capital improvement plan, and at that time where we have examined ARPA funds, infrastructure funds, bonds, at least they will be on the table for consideration. And then, also, since it's adjustable at that time, if, if we're able to address the school facility that, once we have a handle on those funds, but definitely if we could put those up here in their totalities, and then we'll adjust accordingly.
I just wanted to say that, keep in mind that we're limited to that $40 million.
Right.
So, as long as we stay within that $40 million?
Right.
I think we're okay.
Right.
Because even though we can change it, in effect, when you adopt the CIP, you are authorizing us to find funding for those items that are listed.
Right.
And if we're looking at debt, then we know we're limited by $40 million.
Right. And that 40 million could possibly be adjusted by, I'm saying, it's not a definite, we have to use all 40 million.
Correct.
It's just, that's, that's what the...
That's the ceiling.
CFO has told us in staying within our 10% rule.
Correct, correct.
So, so what I'm saying is if we are...
I see, I see what you're saying.
If we're able to revisit this thing and say we don't have to use as much bond funding as we thought, which would be ideal.
Yes.
But at least we would have had these projects on the table to consider.
Correct.
And what I'm saying too is that at that time, we will also, because we have a better handle on sources of funding, be able to look at these significant school projects, the Churchland Elementary School replacement, the K-8 school. We can look at those issues, I think, with better information at that time.
Got you. I understand.
But in the meantime, I would like, if council doesn't object, to add the high school field improvements in their totalities. I think, Mr. Wright, you said the Churchland was 4.8, IC Norcom, we know that was 5.2, I think you told us last meeting.
6.7.
6.7.
Okay, last meeting, it was 5.2. So, it's 6.7?
That was Norcom.
I'm sorry, IC Norcom.
Norcom was 6.7.
Right, right. Last meeting was 5.2, but, so it's all 6.7, all right? And then Manor, 4.6. So, if there's no objection from council, and then we would revisit it at the proper time. So, just...
That concludes the presentation.
Right. So, just to make sure there was no objection from council.
Right.
So, in our motion, in the motion, we need to, with the numbers for the capital improvement, so we need to adjust that figure.
Correct.
Okay. It's 62.
So, if we, if we're done, we can go make those adjustments so we can have that on this.
Thank you, ma'am. Also, we have now come to the item of, do you have any more report, ma'am? Okay. City Council Liaison reports? Are there any City Council Liaison reports at this time? Seeing none, that concludes our work session, and this meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene at our regular council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming.